With chapter 231 Public Law in 1975 entitled Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in the notice January 28, 2020. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in Nutley Sun on February 6, 2020, and posted on the district website. Excuse me, a revised meeting notice was sent out on July 23, 2020, advertising that this meeting was a virtual online meeting. We have the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call Mr. DePisa, please.
Mr. Carnasella.
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferraro.
Here.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Scolera.
Here.
Ms. Zaro.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here, thank you. Any correspondence, Mr. DePisa?
No, sir.
Thank you. I need the approval of the minutes, board members.
Approval.
We'll still approve, second.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Glazer will have the superintendent's report, please.
My report is pretty simple this evening. As we head to the holiday break Wednesday, it is an early dismissal, 12:30 Wednesday. I want to make sure that, um, we have lots of, um, I want to make sure that that community knows that I and the Board of Education am wishing all of the best of the holidays and in the new year. It'll definitely be looking differently this year. Um, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. But I hope everyone does have the opportunity to spend some quality socially-distanced time with family and loved ones. Um, please, please stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the new year with all of the hopes and optimism that a new year brings. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. And I would remind everybody that's on, and I appreciate everyone being here. If you're not speaking, please turn your microphone off. It just causes a lot of feedback and it's, it's cumbersome. Thank you. Um, Mr. DePisa.
Yes, I want to wish Fred Scolera all the best and thank him for his years of service to the township of Nutley. Like to acknowledge the maintenance custodians, grounds, and, uh, and, uh, all of the gentlemen and ladies that cleared the snow last Wednesday and Thursday. They did a nice job, and I just wanted to acknowledge them publicly. Um, once again, I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work of the board committees this month. Um, without your work, this agenda and the work of the district wouldn't be possible. And, um, I would also like to thank, um, the administrators and coordinators for fulfilling the obligation of submitting their budget items on time to the central office for budget prep for 2122. And I wish everyone a happy and healthy and prosperous new year going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePisa. And I must echo the report of your, um, your grounds crew and, and the, um, the township of Nutley, between the Parks Department, the Road Department, and the Board of Education. As usual, Nutley was clear. It's, it's hard to realize unless you live in Nutley and then you travel to the surrounding towns in the time of snow clearing, what a difference Nutley makes. And, and I firmly believe that. And I, I was fortunate enough to drive around that day and, and see our, our, our group out at the schools. Fantastic job, and I want to thank them personally also. Um, Mr. Porigi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The new compressor for John Walker Middle School is scheduled to arrive this week, and I'm awaiting for installation date from Advanced Mechanical. CG Vanderbeck Mechanical Contractor is scheduled to do our yearly cleaning and yearly maintenance of all our boilers throughout the district. Again, waiting for a, uh, date for that to happen. The heat exchanger for the Lincoln School gym unit has been ordered, and we are waiting for delivery. And the unit is still providing heat for the Lincoln gym. Again, waiting for an installation date. Um, products this time of year in the last couple of months have been very hard to procure. Uh, every time we order something, it takes a very long time to get stuff. So not, uh, nothing is on the shelf anymore. So everything we do is taking a lot longer. We had a, I guess, like the Spring Garden gym unit. The leak was repaired, but the, but we are replacing several feet and fittings of the old black pipe that is on the roof to ensure this will not happen again. We are also having an issue with the EMS that controls the, this unit. We are looking into getting this problem fixed. That is the computer that controls the HBA system at Lincoln, at, sorry, Spring Garden School. Uh, it is outdated. Uh, we are looking to update everything throughout the entire district. We had our first major snowstorm for the year, and I would like to thank my staff for doing a great job. And I like to echo David's sentiment. Uh, we did lose one plow truck in the first few hours of the storm. We lost brakes in one of our older trucks that, uh, we are replacing. The truck itself is 22 years old. Uh, and the other truck was working at half-power. And that was also fixed, uh, within, at late, at night, early in the morning of Thursday. Uh, but our grounds stepped up and worked long hours to get the job done. Uh, happy holidays, everybody, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Porigi. Your job well done. Um, Mr. Capello, are you on board?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
You have it, Mr. Capello.
Thank you. Just waiting for Mr. V Meister to present, um, his screen. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, twice a year, I have to conduct a biannual presentation, a biannual report on our HIV statistics, um, for, for the district. Um, today, I'll be conducting information pertaining to last school year, the last half of school year from January through June. Um, this is required as per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Um, so, Mr. V Meister, if you go to the next slide. Um, as you are aware, um, throughout my presentation, I may use the word, the acronym HIB, which stands for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Mr. V Meister, um, throughout our district, we do have staff members that act as anti-bullying specialists. Um, I am the anti-bullying coordinator for the district. Um, each school has an anti-bullying specialist, which their primary, primary objectives are to lead investigations and to be the primary school personnel to prevent, identify, and address incidents of HIV. Mr. V Meister? Thank you. Um, in conducting an investigation, our district, we have three, three different findings which could occur, um, as, as following our investigation. One finding would be that through the investigation, it was determined that the incident did not meet the criteria for HIV or it did not meet the, the criteria for code of conduct. Um, the second findings, it, it could have been considered an HIV event as defined by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Or three, it could be deemed a code of conduct violation, meaning it did not meet the criteria for HIV, um, but it did, it did meet the criteria for a code of conduct violation. So here are statistics regarding last school year from January to June. Um, Mr. V Meister, as you could see, we had a total of 15 cases that were investigated, not meaning that they were considered HIV, but they were alleged incident of HIV. As you could see, the investigations were broken down, two at Lincoln. There were no investigations at Ratcliffe or Washington, three at Spring Garden and the middle school, one at Yanicoa, and six at NHS. Mr. V Meister? In breaking down the elementary school, Lincoln School, we had two total cases that, two cases that were investigated. One case was deemed an HIV incident. The other incident was deemed a non-HIV. As you could see, Ratcliffe and Yanicoa, Ratcliffe and Washington did not have any investigations. We had three investigations at Spring Garden. Two were considered non-HIV. One was considered a code of conduct. And the single incident at Yanicoa was deemed a HIV event. Um, in breaking down the, the cases, the two cases that were deemed HIV, one of the cases was deemed, um, the protected characteristic. The motivating factor that led to the HIV incident was, one was based upon sexual orientation. The other one was, was, um, motivated by several protected characteristics, as you could see below, ancestry, nation of origin, race, and other. Mr. V Meister, please, thank you. At the middle school and at the high school, we had three cases investigated. At the middle school, one was considered, um, a HIV event. Two were deemed a code of conduct. Where we had six investigations at Nutley High School. We had five cases were deemed an HIV event, where one was considered a code of conduct. At the, um, next, Mr., thank you, Mr. V Meister. Out of the six total cases at the middle school and the high school, which were deemed HIV, um, the one case at the middle school was based upon nation of origin and ancestry. Where at the high school, um, five cases, these were the protected characteristics, um, that were targeted out of the five cases. So as you could see, one case could have had more than one, uh, protected characteristic that was targeted. Mr. V Meister? Regarding consequences and remedial measures, um, for the school year in addressing these HIV incidents, um, throughout the school year, from January to June, um, there could have been discipline, whether there was discipline, could have been one of these, where it could have been a lunch, central attention, in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension. Uh, school-based counseling. Um, sometimes, uh, we require an assignment. Uh, it could be a reflection assignment. It could be a, a reaction to, uh, an assignment, a book, a movie that they observed or they read. Um, and any other miscellaneous interventions, remedial measures, contacting parents, which is required anyway. Um, but further contact, parent conferences, uh, monitoring by staff, uh, verbal warnings. Um, we also refer to community providers. It could be restitution, as well as, in some cases, contact with the Nutley Police Department. Mr. V Meister, please? Thank you. Um, also, different, um, objectives, programs, um, constantly training new staff throughout the year. It could be other staff trainings as well, um, meeting with the anti-bullying specialists and administrators. Um, due to our, uh, school closure due to COVID-19, um, didn't really reach out to the, the New Jersey Principal and Supervisory Association for their feedback and for their support. Um, there were a lot of questions, what to do in the case of an investigation of, if it was virtual, according to the state. Um, you know, it was as if school was in, school was in session. Um, so we reached out, um, for guidance from the New Jersey Principal and Supervisory Association. Um, prior to closure, uh, the high school had a program called LIKE, which talked about the impact of social media on relationships and mental health. Um, during COVID-19, during our school closures, uh, we had a Mindful Monday, um, doing virtual learning, which encouraged students to engage in various activities, um, including character-building initiatives, uh, reaching out to the school counseling department. Uh, they had a school, the Schoology webpage provided support for parents. Um, there's also at nutleyschools.org. Um, if you go under District and you go under HIV link, there's a lot of resources regarding, um, HIV information. Um, there's a staff training, there's a parent training, there's our grades, there's a definition, there's all the, the contact information for the anti-bullying specialist, as well as myself. Uh, Mr. V Meister, please? Thank you. Uh, once again, throughout the course of this school year, different elementary, um, programs, character education curriculum, the sixth-grade advisory. For that brief period of time that we were in school through March, um, the LEAD program was there, which, if those who are not familiar with LEAD, uh, basically took the place of the DARE program. This is a program that's initiated through the Nutley Police Department. Um, at the middle school, we have advisory periods twice a month. Um, the high school having their, uh, community service projects. You know, this is all character-building programs, as well as different, um, classroom lessons, um, that are infused into the curriculum as well. Each school, different peer-to-peer activities, clubs, um, fundraisers, any other, you know, virtual Spear Week that build character, um, among students to do the right thing, um, to make positive choices. Thank you, Mr. V Meister. Um, in closing, just some requirements, um, for the Nutley School District that we have to provide information to the Department of Education, working with Dr. Glazer, uh, providing information regarding all of our incidents in the district, uh, any training program, any trainings and programs. At the conclusion of each school year, the Department of Education provides us with a 41-page rubric where we have to self-assess our compliance with the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Um, we have not yet received the grades, um, where we self-assessed ourselves, which they were submitted in July. Usually they do come out, probably, they'll probably come out in June 2021. Um, and once those grades are posted, um, it'll be posted. Once those grades are released, I'm sorry, they'll be posted on the district's homepage, as well as each school's website. Thank you.
Mr. Capello, as usual, thank you very much. Thank you to your staff. Um, obviously, the people that you have assigned to each school, but also the administrators that you work with. I, I know, I, I know it's a difficult job. I'm not sure if it's more or less difficult with, with the, uh, with the epidemic going on and, and people being confined, but I, we appreciate what you're doing. A very comprehensive report, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just also want to thank you all for always being there and staff, whether it's our new Right at School team or, um, new staff. You, you really prepare them, whether we're in person or virtual. And thank you for all the work you've done for all of us and all the schools to bring us up to speed on HIPster. It was, I know it was. It makes a difference for us. Thank you.
Thank you again. Uh, at this time, as we slowly progress through tonight, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for one of our, um, teachers that we lost, uh, Mr. Ed Olson. And I believe Mrs. Quirk would like to say something at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a former Washington school mom, whose oldest child had Mr. Olson as a sixth-grade teacher, I, I would like to read his obituary. Edmund G. Olson, 76th of Nutley, passed away on Sunday, December 13, 2020. Born in Hollywood, California, he was the son of the late Edmund Senior and Gloria Olson. Edmund was raised in Harrison. He served as an acolyte at the Church, Christ Episcopal Church, and came to Nutley in 1975. Mr. Olson was a dedicated teacher and coach, serving in Nutley for 35 years before retiring. After graduating from Jersey City State University, he taught sixth grade at Washington School, coached the Nutley Raiders' traveling seventh and eighth-grade basketball team. He was also the director of the Washington School Aftercare Program, was a board member of the town's juvenile council, and enjoyed playing softball and basketball with the local men's leagues. He is survived by his dear sisters, Gail Olson and Michelle Reed, and her wife, Kaitlin Braw, and her extended family. The memorial service at the Episcopal Church in Nutley will be held at a later date. In lieu of flowers, memorial donations in honor of Mr. Olson may be made to the American Cancer Society. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Quirk. And I was fortunate enough to know Mr. Olson, um, as, as a teacher on my, when I was on the board in the past, and as a coach, and, um, outstanding person, and, and he did a lot for Nutley and for Nutley's children. Um, anyone else like to say something at this time? Mr. Riley? Okay, I thought Mr. Riley knew him.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I knew, uh, I've known Ed for, uh, many years. And, uh, he was a great staff member at Washington School for many years. And he took that same passion and focus to the aftercare program and did a great job there, and, um, will be missed in Nutley. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, again, slowly moving through our program tonight, I know we're going to recognize our football team at our January meeting, but it's not often that Nutley comes up with a complete, perfect season. I think from what I'm looking at, the newspaper was 91 years ago. And, um, I, I know some of our board members might like to make a little comment tonight about the team. Again, realizing that we are going to recognize them in January. Mr. DeMayo.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I would just want to congratulate the football team on a successful season. I know it was not very easy to, um, you know, ups and downs. And we had to quarantine, we had to cancel a game because another town had to quarantine. Uh, it wasn't a very easy year for them. I'm just very proud of the way they persevered, made it through, and, uh, had a fantastic finish to their year. Um, so congratulations. Uh, I know we're going to congratulate them officially, uh, later in, um, later at another meeting in January. Uh, and just so they all know that we will be doing something, congratulating them through the township as well. Uh, but thank you for a couple of minutes there.
Thank you, Mr. DeMayo. Anyone else would like to say something? I think, Mr. Riley, you might have known someone on that team.
Uh, yeah, my nephew, uh, Matthew Harbison's a quarterback. And, uh, they had a great season, and I was fortunate enough to make, uh, several games. And it was very exciting. And, uh, cheers to the coach, uh, who is the Coach of the Year in the state of New Jersey. Congratulations to our coach. She's done a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members like to say something? But again, we will recognize that team in our January meeting. But if someone else would like to say something, Mr. Scolera, now's the time.
Thank you, Mr. Kozinski. So yes, I'd like to definitely recognize them. Also, when you see how many became, or eight, I mean, of our kids who are actually recognized outside of Nutley for the, for the games they've done this year. And I really want to call out and can just mention it, Mr. Di Gregorio, who, uh, battled very, uh, not great help in the past couple of years, but came back to actually, um, you know, lead the team this year, Coach of the Year. I mean, what a successful program, um, under Mr. Di Gregorio, with, with the kids that believed in him and worked with him since last year through this year. And, uh, what a great record and great team. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Scolera.
You're right, Mr. Scolera. Anyone else like to say something now? Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Di Gregorio, for a great job that you did with us, did for us. Uh, at this time, it becomes a little difficult for me to recognize my dear friend. Not difficult, only because I'm going to miss Mr. Scolera. We have a resolution tonight, whereas Mr. Fred, whereas Mr. Fred Scolera has to be excited to be elected to reelection as Board of Education trustee and therefore vacate his seat on the Nutley Board of Education effective January 2021. He has signed his intention of stepping away from, uh, from active board service, which I find hard to believe. Whereas Mr. Scolera served on the Board of Education for the Nutley Public Schools for many years, and also served the township of Nutley in a myriad of ways as a public servant. Whereas through the years, Mr. Scolera has exemplified the finest qualities of the Board of Trustee position at all times and put the students of Nutley and their education first and foremost. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education expresses to Mr. Scolera its deep appreciation for his long and faithful service and extends to him his best wishes for continued health and happiness. And be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this meeting. That very briefly says what all of us would like to say about the job Mr. Scolera has done for us and for the town of Nutley. I, I will try to hold the plaque up. This will be presented to Fred. We were hoping to meet tonight and give it to him, but we'd rather not do that since Christmas is coming up. We want to keep everyone safe. But we will make it a point to travel to Disney World with Mr. Scolera, um, and, and present this to him down there, or wherever. Um, I also have a plaque from the Nutley Board of Education, and it reads Frederick Scolera in recognition and with sincere appreciation of the distinguished and unwavering nine years of service, leadership, and vision to the Nutley Board of Education. Nine years is, is only a small pittance of what Fred Scolera has given to the town of Nutley. And I, I know, you know, we could go on forever, but I've known Fred since he was 12, 13, 14 years old as a volunteer fireman, worked his way up through, um, replaced me as the deputy chief on the fire department when I retired, um, served in the assembly. And, and what some of us don't know is that the job he did in Nutley and the job he did for Nutley Board of Education was tripled and quadrupled when he was in the assembly. And, and he was able to help Nutley financially, Nutley Board of Education and the township of Nutley. And, and he does it all for the love of Nutley. His son just graduated from the University of Central Florida. Yeah, right, Fred? And, and, um,
Yes.
Again, great honor to you and to Joanne. And, um, I, I know that we are going to find something for you to do to keep you busy when you do have a little bit of downtime. We can find a committee to put you on. Um, we could go on all night, Fred, but I, but I love you. And, um, I'm going to miss you on the board, and I'll certainly see you around Nutley. Anyone else would like to say something? I'm, I'm sure we all do.
Freddie, since 2014, I've had the pleasure of working with you here on the Nutley Board of Education. Your dedication to Nutley started way before 2012, when you were first elected to the board. And it dates back to your career with the Nutley Fire Department, as Charlie mentioned. Um, and even your time representing Nutley and the rest of the state as an Assemblyman from 2003 to 2011. Certainly a long history of being a leader and advocate for all of us who call Nutley home. Although your time, excuse me, although your time here on the board comes to its close, I know that you will continue, as leaders do, to support the best outcomes for our community. You've been a tremendous mentor for many, and at times a soothing voice of reason. And I feel privileged to call you my friend. Uh, all the best to you, Joanne and Eric. Congratulations with, with, uh, him graduating college. Happy Merry Christmas, a safe and healthy new year. I look forward to, uh, our continued work here in Nutley. All the best, Freddie. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Pre-choke.
Mrs. Zaro, did you have something you want to say? Go ahead. Now's the time.
Thank you. I just wanted to say good luck, Fred. It's been a pleasure to work with you over the past two years. You, uh, you've taught me a lot, you've been a mentor, and you've always been an objective, like, similar to what Danny said, sound voice. And I appreciate that, and I wish you very good luck in everything you do.
Thank you. Mrs. Dancheck.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Kozinski. Um, Fred, I really first got to know you when we ran for the board in 2011. And your vast knowledge and experience with the Nutley Fire Department, New Jersey State Assembly, and emergency preparedness management has been a great asset to this district. You have always been the voice for the community, district, and students. I've learned so much from you. And I'm going to miss all your stories and the amount of historical knowledge you have of Nutley. I swear, you blew, you bleed maroon and gray. It's been an honor to serve with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr., Mr. DeMayo?
Freddie, I know I've gone beyond that long. I do know you for quite some time now. Uh, you do know me from probably when I was a younger, younger, more, um, let's say, vigorous young man. Uh, I do want to, I do want to thank you for, for, for some of the talks that we've had. Uh, you know, bouncing some things off you, bouncing, you know, back and forth over the last two years. I do appreciate all your help. You are what Nutley is. Um, you've served this town, not just on the board, uh, for nine, for the nine years, but in many other capacities, uh, work, um, assembly, uh, and just being you with the hockey program here that people may not realize how much you've done for Nutley High School Athletics as well. Um, but I do want to say thank you. I truly will miss you on the board, and I wish you all the success going forward.
Thank you, Fred.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I just want to say that, um, there's 211 people that are part of this meeting tonight. And 99.9% of them don't know anything about Freddie Scolera. So let, let me just cut to the chase and make it quick. Freddie Scolera has been a volunteer in this town. Forget about New Jersey State Assembly. Forget about his Board of Education. Forget his firemen. Forget about Rotary. Forget about all the things he's been involved in his whole life. He's a man that's never said no to anyone ever. If anyone ever needed anything, help with anything, moving something, time, just a voice of reason, Freddie's been that guy that the world needs many more of. There's not enough volunteers in this world. And Freddie is at the pinnacle of volunteer and service before self. He's serviced this town, this state. Now he's serving the globe, and, and I'm proud to call him my friend. And I know he's not going to disappear. Uh, and if I ever need him, I'll always be able to call him. And if I ever need him, I'll always be able to call him. And you're an amazing person. You're you're someone that my kids aspire to be. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I'm sorry, Fred. Go ahead. And it's not it's not only New Jersey. I'm sorry, Fred. I keep cutting you off. Go ahead, Fred.
No, I'm good, Charlie.
It's not only New Jersey. I remember when Fred and his father traveled to my house in New York State and built my fire, helped me build my fireplace. I had to feed him, but it was worth it. Anyone else like to say something? Dr. Glazer.
Well, Fred, you know, I still remember my interview for this position five years ago. And you tried to tell me in a in a really brief amount of time what a special place that Nutley is. And over the last years, I've come to love and understand this town. And there's nothing that I have enjoyed more, nothing, than spending time with you, listening to your stories from your early days with Mr. Arekio, your time at the firehouse. Those are all good stories. Learning from you, from your Assembly days, and love hearing about all your latest adventures. There's no question what you're doing is exciting. I actually couldn't believe when you told me that your son graduated this last week because I still remember him in high school and hockey and the big move to Florida, all of that. So congratulations. That that's a wonderful life milestone also. I have loved our time together. And I'm going to look forward to hearing all about your next chapter. Your insight, your sensibility, your commitment to this Board, to the students, to this community have left their mark on the town, but also on me. I will miss you. I will miss working with you. And I do hope you'll stay involved with us and connected with us. You still have just so much more to contribute. I'll see you at the Rotary. But until then, good luck. Thank you for everything.
You're right. Mrs. Quirk. I'm sorry, Mrs. Quirk.
I don't know, Freddie. You have so many stories. You really need to write them all down. So because you really are the Board of Ed historian. You know things that nobody else knows. And I really, I thank you so much for your insight, and and it's it's been really wonderful. So best of luck to you for the future.
Thank you, Terry.
Anyone else like? Of course, Mr. Farrow. Go ahead.
Thank you. Fred, I want to congratulate you on Eric graduating college. That's first and foremost, obviously. I know how important Eric is to you. And I want to thank you for your service to the Board of Education, to the Township. I want to thank you for your friendship. I know, although you won't be with us with on the Board, I know you're not going to be far away, and you'll always be available with a phone call. I know you'll always be there for us. And just wish you the best. Thank you for your friendship. And again, enjoy whatever it is that you decide to do. It's time for you now to spend some time with you and your wife and your son. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal.
And like you said, Fred is not going away. He's leaving us unfortunately, but not going away. But we will, when things get back to normal, we will, I will make sure all board members know that we will have a little party get together with Mr. Scoler and present him with the plaques and whatever else we want to do at that time. Anyone else wants to say something at this time? Thank you. I'll take committee reports now. I'm sorry.
I say something.
Oh, of course, Fred, I'm sorry. I thought you, actually, Fred, when Mr. Riley said there were 211 people here, I thought they were all for you, honestly. I was hoping they were all for you. But certainly, Fred, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You know, it's been a great career, and I started it with Mr. Kozinski just about 14 years old. Actually, Mr. Kozinski introduced me to Mr. Arekio and the fire service. And then my father got involved. Then Charlie and I have done things, you know, SYA. SYA? I'm sorry, yes, I'll get rid of that. It's a work phone. I apologize if it's always come off. But we started, you know, we helped started the SYA. Charlie and I drove the first buses and the handicapped scout troop. And then we moved the building to build the SYA. And we've done so many things throughout our career. I can't thank Charlie enough. He really got me started into this line, along with my father, of course. I can never forget my father who taught me everything. But from there and then through, you know, I was going through some of my notes today. I served and helped over 1,500, there's been over 15 commissioners in this town since I've been involved in the original time. When the original commissioners, Chenoweth, Jernik, Lucy, Arekio, and Caciola, now under the new Board, which, you know, and if you look at all our commissioners from that's been here, and I don't want to go through them all, to the current ones, of Tucci and Scarpelli and Evans and Kelly and I know I'm missing one, and Petracca, right? I mean, all grew up in this town and to support it. Every commissioner that's been here has done that. Just in my short time, not through my career, but just in the short time on the Board, there's been 15 Board members that have changed since I came on the Board that we work with, all dedicated that lived here and worked here. Three superintendents from Joe Zara over to Russ Lazovic and to Dr. Glazer. Everybody here has been for the best of this district, the best of the town, the functioning of this town, the working relationship. We have a Board of Commissioners that we work with. That working relationship, you heard it earlier about snow removal, the Christmas trees, the Oval, the projects in this town. It's all family. It's all people that have been dedicated forever to this township. You know, it was just time for me, you know, over 40 years, pretty much from County Committee through the Legislature and the Board of being pretty much elected at some point here in the township, right? At some point, you have to make some decisions. And Charlie's right. I don't want to go late. I want to be here when they're ready to go for a referendum and about there and help. I still want to help the school district. But most of my Board members do know I run this, I won't give it name, this really large federal project in all 50 states, five territories, and the District of DC. And it's a commanding project, and it's been tremendous. And we worked with many things through this year, throughout the world, actually, on this project. And I just felt that it was the time to, you know, have other people that, you know, are younger coming in, Mr. Balsamo's coming back, that have children that are involved, Charlie's grandchildren he's here for. And I just thought that I could support the Board just as much. I don't have to be an elected official. I've never used the title on anything anybody's seen from me in the town. Doesn't matter what I've done. It's about doing the right thing. So I don't need to be an elected official or on a Board or have a title to be able to support the things we still need to do and volunteer in this town. And Mr. Riley really said it great, so I'm not going to go into all of that. But I'm still involved in the Rotary and the Unico and those projects, and don't intend to going away. And I want to just thank everybody that are on tonight. But I also, you know, they're virtually on, but my son and my wife are both on tonight. And without them, and of course, my father and mother that drove me in the right direction, I wouldn't be here speaking this tonight. So thank you, everyone. I'm not going to go on and on. I will see each of you at some point and say thank you to you and your kind words. But thank you again.
Thank you, Fred. And I don't say this very often to men, but I love you. I love everything you've done for the town and for me and for my family and for the people of Nutley. Your pleasure. It was a pleasure to be with you all these years. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll take committee reports. Mrs. Dancheck Martin, academic, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The Academic Committee met on December 16. Ms. Gergens presented to the committee members with an update on the ongoing programs and services provided by the School Counseling Department. The presentation included a description of the School Counseling Virtual Learning Plan, as well as the updates at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Ms. Gergen presented the 2021-2022 Nutley High School Program of Studies, including changes to courses and course descriptions, as well as processes and procedures for scheduling in a virtual environment. Dr. Soja and Mr. Vemeister joined the committee to discuss long-range scenarios for student, staff, and classroom technology device renewal. Dr. Soja highlighted six options for the devices and will be discussed with administration as we enter the budgeting season. Ms. Michau joined the committee to update the members on the NJ DOE bilingual testing modifications due to virtual learning. Nutley is prepared to participate in the bilingual literacy program. Mr. Bagna, Ms. Locan Solo presented the committee with a timeline and projected scores for the annual CUSAC review process. Dr. Glazer and Mr. Bagna presented the nursing plan to the committee. Mr. Bagna advised the committee that the district received $228,171 in security grant money, which will be applied to the Yanacost Secure Entrance Project. Yay. Dr. Glazer led a discussion surrounding the return to school for staff and students. Trustee Quirk asked questions regarding staffing, district communication, and certified staff evaluations. Mr. Bagna, Ms. Locan Solo updated the committee to the observation process, including the NJ DOE Guidance Release, DEAC Committee Recommendations, and the progression of observations. Mr. Bagna, Ms. Locan Solo updated the committee on progression of ninth and 10th grade PSATs, high school and middle school tutoring program, and the assessment committee. Our next meeting of the Academic Committee will be determined following reorganization of the Board in January 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Carnesella, Administration, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Administrative Committee met on December 15, 2020. The attendance at that meeting was myself, Mr. Riley, Mr. Scoler, Dr. Glazer, Kenz Bagna, and Meredith Gergens. We discussed, we were presented with the changes in our school counseling, pre-K through 12. Dr. Glazer detailed the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CARES Act spending, and school security grant. Dr. Glazer reviewed the budget development process. We're all excited to know we have our our ad hoc committee getting ready to go, and we all have our budget books getting ready to be distributed. So we're going to be very well prepared going into 2021 and finalizing our budget for the 2021-2022 school year. Mr. Bagna reviewed the CUSAC, which is on the agenda for tonight's approval. And Dr. Glazer gave us an overview of the change calendar for winter sports, including the virtual practices for hockey and bowling. The committee discussed the return of school, and Dr. Glazer shared legal and personnel updates. The next meeting for the Administration Committee will be determined at the end of our Board reorganization in January.
Thank you, Mr. Carnesella. Mr. Farrow, Finance, please.
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on December 15. Alexis Goldman from Solutions Architecture was present at the meeting and discussed the Oval Project and the remaining punch list items. Also discussed tree planting, the scoreboard, and the Musco lighting. Alexis will contact our scoreboard company on items that need to be addressed and have the company at our next meeting. Meredith Gergens reported on the objectives, plans, and items being implemented by the Guidance Department since the onset of COVID-19. The presentation was going to be made to each committee. Dr. Glazer discussed the in-person return to school date for the staff and students. That discussion also was discussed with the rest of the Board in committees. Mr. Bagna discussed the CUSAC DPRs and the submissions of the county's office. This discussion will be made at each of the Board Committee. Mr. De Pisa updated the committee on the Corona relief and the CARES Act monies, grants that the school has received. The Board Member's Budget binders for the 2021 and 2022 school year will be distributed after the reorganization meeting. And the Budget Ad Hoc Committee will also be meeting sometime the first week following the reorganization meeting. Mr. Parigi reported on the middle school compressor, the heat exchanger at Lincoln School Gym, and the Spring Garden School Gym HVAC unit. The district will be looking at the EMS units, which allow for remote settings for the heat and air conditioning, which need to be evaluated and replaced. And the committee also discussed the Maintenance and Ground Department's preparation for the last week's storm. And our next Finance meeting will be scheduled the next or next meeting in January.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. I would encourage everyone, again, I don't know who it was, but be sure, if you're not speaking, that your mic is on silence. Mrs. Zara, can you bring us up to date on the Policy Committee, please?
Sure, Mr. President. Hello, everybody. The Policy Committee met December 16 at 8:20 PM approximately. Our meeting was virtual. We updated and reviewed policies from October 28, 2020 for first reading on the agenda for tonight. We reviewed OLO bylaws governance. We had a review of the 1000s administrative. Our next Policy Committee meeting will include a review of Finance and Operations. And everything on that we went over is included in the agenda. There's over 35 of them, so I'm not going to read them to everybody. But they're in categories under Rescind, Second Reading, First Reading, Policy, and Regulations. The next meeting of the Policy Committee will be determined following our reorg meeting. And happy holidays, everybody, and safe and healthy.
Thank you, Mrs. Zara. And for what it's worth, I know there are 203 people I see online. If you if you listen carefully to what was going on with our committee meetings, we meet on a regular basis, and everything that you see on the resolution items tonight was discussed. So leading into that, I will make a statement discussing some of the resolutions that are going to be on the Board tonight. We'll also have our Board Attorney make a statement about resolutions that are before you tonight. But I want the town to understand, or the 203 people that are with us right now, to understand that we do look at everything, decipher everything, have input from as many citizens as we can reach or reach us, understand that all of us are parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles. Somewhere in this town, we have children that are involved in the system, and that's probably the main reason that we're here. So when when people put out items on Facebook, which I don't like to look at because they're not, a lot of them are not true, or you can't answer them back again, we don't live in a vacuum. We don't go to work making decisions in a vacuum. We rely on our state and local health partners. We get direction and data from the state and local Departments of Health and the Department of Education. Prior to putting out the agenda on Friday with the target return dates, all Board members were disgusted, talked about it. We talked about what we want to do. Most of us were on board with the resolution that you see tonight. Please be assured that our dates were shared with the Executive County Superintendent and the Department of Public Health. As we have said, everyone wants the students back in school. And in COVID-19, activity levels lower considerably in the state in the coming weeks. The Board will hold a special meeting in mid-January to reevaluate our early return. You need to understand that. Everyone seems to read about the start date, but doesn't go down to the bottom of the page where it says the Board will hold a special meeting in mid-January or whenever necessary to reevaluate an early return. We want our children back in the school district as bad as you want them back in the school district. But we want all 4,000 of them back safely. The Governor reported on Friday that despite additional deaths related to coronavirus, hospitalizations, transmissions rates, and positivity rates all dropped for the first time in a long time. Yes, we did extend the Public Health and Burdens Executive Orders for additional 30 days. Mr. Vemeister, can you start with the slides, please? Okay. Ian, I, thank you. That's the first slide. I've just read my statement from that first slide. The next slide, please, Mr. Vemeister. Again, this is a report from the Patricia Cruz, our Public Health Nursing Supervisor. And as you can see, based on review of the COVID-19 weekly activity reports, and I don't want to have to go through and read every part of it, but we base we base our decisions on the needs of our children, the needs of the town, the needs of SS County, based on what the Governor says, what the County Health Department says, and what the Local Health Department says. And you can read that there in front of you. Mr. Vemeister, next slide, please. As you can see, all of New Jersey turned yellow, turned from yellow to orange on the state's COVID-19 activity map. When the regions were still in yellow zone, schools were told to consider a mixture of remote and/or hybrid learning approaches and fully remote learning. Again, we followed the guidelines that the state puts out to us based on Again, we follow the guidelines that the state puts out to us based on local concerns, local Nutley concerns. Next, Mr. V. Meister. The rules about what to do, I'm sorry, the rules about what to do if a teacher or student gets sick change when the region moves to orange. While schools in yellow regions are told to close schools or ask students and teachers to quarantine if someone tests as positive for COV-19, schools in orange zones should close or quarantine even if someone has only COVID-compatible symptoms, like a cough or a fever, and has not been tested according to the guidelines. Schools in orange must also begin to restrict activities in which students from different classes might come into contact, as the guidelines say. Restrictions include push-in, pull-out, special education, speech, OT, PT, done in small groups, ELL, small groups, strategy, small groups, and in-class support are impacted. Passing between classes, if you're familiar with the middle school and high school, passing between classes in grades seven and 12 also becomes a challenge. Closure is a local decision in consultation with state and public school, public health departments. Again, local decision in consultation with state and local public health. Thank you, Mr. V. Meister. Next slide, please. Essex County red activity level. The designation means the daily new COVID virus cases rate per 100,000 people rose to very high, exceeding 25 cases per 1,000 people. Essex County reported 40,110 cumulative cases on Friday. I don't know where the people on Facebook get their information from, but it's certainly not from the Governor and not from the state of New Jersey. They seem to pull these numbers out of the sky. These are actual numbers from the state of New Jersey. December 11, cumulative cases on Friday, December 11. An increase of 3,010 over the previous week. The county reported 2,058 cumulative deaths linked to COVID-19, an increase of 36 over the previous week. Essex County reported 43,038 cumulative cases on Friday, December 18. An increase of 2,928 cases over the previous week. The county reported 2,081 cumulative deaths linked to COVID-19, an increase of 23 over the previous week. It's upsetting to read these numbers and then look at some of the misinformation that is put out locally and on Facebook. Newark, Belleville, Bloomfield, extremely high. And we touch every one of them. Your children, my grandchildren, play with children, or communicate with children, or talk to children, or maybe even visit children from Bloomfield, Belleville, Nutley, and Newark. It happens. At this time, districts that have not been remote are going virtual and remaining some until mid to late January or early February or longer, we believe, I believe, or we believe, once the Christmas and New Year's vacations go into effect. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. Essex County red level. The township of Nutley announced 145 additional cases since the last announcement on 12/4/2020, bringing the cumulative by total to 1330 cases and 39 deaths in Nutley alone. I don't know where, again, people can look at these numbers and not realize that your neighbor has died. Your neighbor's children have taken sick. Your aunts, your uncles, friends of ours, friends of everybody that we know in Nutley, there's not a person out of these 207 people that are on here now that don't know of somebody, or know a relative, or hurt someone that has died in the town of Nutley. I'm not going to take that chance to send my 4,000 children back to school until the cases have gone way down and we feel safe with them. The township of Nutley announced 123 additional cases and one death since the last announcement on 12/11/2020. And I personally know that one death, unfortunately, and so do a lot of my board members, bringing the cumulative by total to 1,453 cases and 40 deaths. Forty-four new cases and two additional deaths were reported today. Staff that does not live in Nutley are reported by their hometown health department. Understand, when people also criticize us for not listening to the public, we listen to our teachers, we listen to our administrators, we listen to our citizens, we listen to our daughters, we listen to our sons, we listen to every citizen that we can meet any place in Nutley. A lot of us work in Nutley. Couple of our people work for different departments in Nutley. They're in touch with Nutley more than you could ever imagine in your lifetime. So we talk to everybody that's out there. So for someone to say to me, and I say "me," when I say "me," I mean the nine board members, to say to us that we don't listen to anyone, or we live in a vacuum, or we don't care, you're absolutely wrong. More than 100 confirmed positive cases, close contact requiring quarantine or travel requirement quarantine related just to Nutley High School alone since the spring. Thirty-four of those since the Thanksgiving break. Again, 34 of those quarantined since the Thanksgiving break. Thirty-one at the John Walker Middle School just since Thanksgiving break. Those are my grandchildren in the middle school. I'm not going to risk their lives because somebody on Facebook thinks that I'm not doing the right thing. On the following, on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, we had more than 100 staff and students in quarantine or isolation representing all seven schools. You might not see, you might not know it, but every one of our schools, every one of our districts have been affected. Our teachers are putting their lives on the line. Our staff is putting their lives on the line, just like our policemen, our firemen, our teachers. I categorize them in the same order. To be clear, the spread is not happening in our schools. We firmly believe that the schools are safe. Our buildings are safe, and our protocols are solid. It is the community spread. When people have birthday parties for their children in the middle school and have 30 children at their house not wearing masks, and then two days later, or three days later, four of those children test positive, that's not the school's fault. That's your fault. Families are not telling the truth. On a daily screening forum, when questioned by school nurses sending a child who has come close to contact or isn't positive to school in her event, or denying that they have traveled when the child has reported it in school and there has been no quarantine, parents are lying to us. They are telling us that they're not traveling, but when their kid, which children will do, goes into school and he tells his friend, "Oh, we just came back from Pennsylvania. We just came back from New York, went to visit my grandmother," whatever, they should be quarantining. It's not happening. People are coming into our own school, filling out paperwork, and telling us that everything is okay in their house, and they're lying to us. Some are confused, and some still don't understand that they are to stay home, quarantine, or isolated, awaiting test results if they're close contact or travel, or even if they just have the symptoms. The daily electronic screening form is a tool to help you report that. The school nurse is able to consult with you, track symptoms, or provide resources. People are still having house parties and gathering of more than 10, which is a breach of the executive order. It's happening. You know it's happening. So for people to go on Facebook or to go anywhere and try to put the blame back on the Nutley Board of Education trustees is a fallacy. We're doing the right job. Our protocol is good. Our direction from the superintendent, our following through with the administrators, and the people in Nutley from the commissioners, from the health department, is strict. It's on point. It's the way it should be. Parents are not abiding by what they should be abiding by. People are still not wearing their mask, and people are still keeping less than six-foot distance. I will not go near anybody that gets that close to me. I don't even like to bump elbows or bump knuckle, do a knuckle fist. I don't need that. And if you're smart enough as a parent or grandparent, you don't need it either. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister, please. The overall coronavirus risk rose to high because the new daily case rate in each of the counties rose to 10 or more per 1,000 people. The percent of COVID-19-like illnesses rose above 5.52 in each of the counties. The percent of positive cases rose above 10.5. The transmission rate remains above 1.0, which indicates the outbreak is expanding. With the rise to a high level, schools may have to take more serious steps, such as quarantining or even shutting down schools if a child shows the symptoms of COVID-19. I spoke to our superintendent today, and I spoke to other school districts today that are extremely upset because boards in their towns have made the decision to come back. They're open for a week, a week and a half, two weeks, and then they're closed down again. Then they come back for a week, and then they're closed down again. That's ludicrous, in my mind, in my mind. It is our plan to do COV testing of all staff and students prior to return to the building. And I repeat that because you need to know our plan. When we do come back to school in the hybrid form, we will be coming back with testing every teacher, staff member, and student. So again, I've already been talking to my eighth-grade middle school student who's 14 years old, and as you can relate to, knows everything. And I give him credit for thinking he knows everything, but he will be tested before he goes back to school. And part of the planning and discussion is the schedule accommodating almost 5,000 people. That's what we have in our Nutley School District. There are several test methods and several different returns of results, so we have been talking to several counties and providers. We believe this will be an important step in returning to the building safely and to instill confidence for staff and members and families. We want to do that. There should be no thought in your mind that we are not here to protect you. It's not a Hitler-type society. We are here to protect you, the people of Nutley. And some people say, "Well, it's not our concern to protect all of Nutley." It is our concern. I have relatives, you have relatives, we all have family in Nutley. Nutley is incestuous, and I've always made that joking comment. Everybody is related to somebody in Nutley. We don't want our Nutley people to get sick. We certainly don't want our staff and our children to be put in jeopardy. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister, if you don't mind. Again, just so you understand, when we do come back, and again, I need to make it clear, our target date right now, and we spent many, many hours discussing this as a board, our target date is March 1. Do we want to come back sooner? Without a doubt. Do I want my eighth-grade student to be socially involved and back in the school system, academically involved, without a doubt, when it's safe for them to do that? We plan on revisiting the numbers on a weekly basis, daily if we have to, but certainly a weekly basis. If we find the numbers going down, if we find that things are looking better in Nutley, I don't care what Dr. Fauci says in Washington, and I respect Dr. Fauci to no end, but he doesn't make the call for Nutley. If his grandchildren were in Nutley, I would still make the same decision to keep them home now. But when things are safe, we want to bring our children back, and they will be coming back still in a hybrid position. So if you choose to keep your child home, you'll have the right to do that. If you choose to put them in school, they will be tested. Understand that. We still have a responsibility to the town of Nutley and to our teachers and staff to make sure they are safe. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister, please. In New Jersey, almost 18,000 school-aged children aged 5 to 17 have contacted COVID-19 since the start of March. Eighteen thousand children, making up 6.5% of all cases, but only 428 are known to have caught the virus at school. Those aged 30 to 49 make up the largest percentage with 31.6% of cases, followed by those aged 50 to 64, making 24% of those who have caught the virus. While that is almost 56% statewide, those ages represent 79% of our staff. I think Fred and I fall into that last category, 50 to 64, right, Fred? More than 98 outbreaks, two or more cases that occur as a result of contact at school. These numbers don't include the students or staff believed to have been infected outside of school. Those numbers keep rising every week. And while Governor Murphy says in-person learning is safe when the appropriate protections are in place, even in communities with high transmission rate, this is not keeping schools open. The state does not maintain a public list of schools or districts that have had to close. But the Governor reported the information on this slide on Friday. When we have numbers of staff that are eligible for accommodations based on health or required to quarantine, I'm sorry, or are required to quarantine, they are not in school. And again, I need to repeat that. When we have numbers of staff that are eligible for accommodations based on health or required to quarantine, they are not in school. So understand, if a teacher or a staff member who lives in Glen Ridge tests positive in Glen Ridge because they tested in their own district, they will be quarantined, and we will lose them as a teacher or staff in Nutley. So it's not just the people in Nutley that test positive. It's the many, many staff that live outside of Nutley that could test positive in their town, and we lose them as teachers. And I wouldn't want to jeopardize losing them altogether. There are not enough subs available to staff classrooms when the students are, and the staff needs to be virtual. This has been the case in a number of districts requiring them to stay remote or to pivot back to virtual learning multiple times. What some of the people that go on Facebook don't seem to realize is that we don't have enough subs to fill the open position if our staff is quarantined, or God forbid, if they are sick. Just last Wednesday, Howell Township, a district of our same size, who has been publicly committed to in-person instruction, switched to virtual learning starting on Wednesday after 20% of staff and students were excluded from in-person learning due to Corona symptoms or exposure. Over 1,000 members of the school community, 1 in 5, were disqualified from attending in-person classes after being sickened with the Corona, presenting coronavirus symptoms, or being exposed to someone who was sick. Districts like Glen Ridge, Livingston, Summit, Chatham have all had to pivot to remote due to outbreaks. Despite procedures, it is very challenging for all involved. If you think that this Nutley Board of Education is going to put our teachers and our staff and our children, and not in that order, but there is no reason to put any of them at risk because of what somebody says on Facebook. We all know you want to get back to work. We all know that my 14-year-old grandson is going crazy because he's bored stiff on virtual. I understand that. I feel for you, I feel for him. But there's no reason for us to put the safety of our children and the safety of our staff ahead of our personal feelings. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. Well, charts. We've all seen these charts. Charts that we have been using since August as per state of New Jersey Department of Health, source of the New Jersey Department of Health. Essex County is currently red. Do you understand that Essex County is currently red? We can go back up to the slide that we had on there before, but red is dangerous. Red is dangerous. When Fred and I were firemen, red is dangerous globally. When people are terrorists or in our country, it's the same thing when red is endangering your children and your teachers. Cannot have it. This requires that schools implement remote learning. According to the county offices, at this time, all dates of return are ballpark figures. And understand, I see the return dates out there. We all see the return dates. But just because someone puts out that they're going back January the 19th, my personal opinion, I doubt that on January the 19th, they will be going back because we know that people are traveling. You look at the airlines, they expect millions of travelers over the holiday, over the Christmas, New Year's holiday. Those people are traveling, and they're going to bring back the disease. And I don't want to bring you back to my school, and my teachers, and my staff, and my children. Again, not in that order. Most are expecting that after the holiday, dates will be extended. If this is not the case, the board is prepared to hold a special meeting. Again, we certainly want our children back. If the numbers go down, which we all hope they do, if they go down- If the numbers go down, which we all hope they do, if they go down in January, we will, I will be the first one, I won't be the first one, I know other board members will be on Dr. Glazer's case to call for a special meeting, we'll call for that meeting, and we will reevaluate it on a weekly basis if we have to. We are just as concerned as you as getting back to normalcy if it takes, if there is such a thing. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. So what we're looking at, this slide doesn't mean anything to you probably, but what we're looking at is COVID testing the week of February the 15th and 22nd, staff COVID teching the week of 22nd, student the week of 22nd, and the need for each person to quarantine until they receive results. It doesn't do people any good, and I don't know how, how people don't get it. When you get tested, until you get the results back, you should lock yourself down. I'm kind of paranoid and I don't go a lot of places except in the woods where there aren't many people or no people, but I enjoy being in the woods. But I was, my wife and I were tested Friday. Other than that, I don't go anywhere. You can't go anywhere until you get those results back. Staff in buildings the week of February the 27th, all meetings will remain virtual. Students in grades pre-K through 2, all levels of self-contained special education. We want our pre-K, we want the special needs children, we want them back in the schools as soon as we can. Grade seven, nine, and 10 will return to hybrid instruction in the building on Monday, March the first. Students in grade three through six, eight, 11, and 12 will return to school for hybrid instruction on Monday, March the 8th, 2021. And again, those are all numbers in flow. We want it to be sooner, but we felt it, we felt the need to put dates out there for our parents that want to make plans, that want to see into the future, see what's going on, to run our district, we need to have some type of an agenda, that's why this is there. Do we want it to be sooner? I don't know how many times I can say it, we want it to be sooner, but we want it to be sooner when your children will be safe in our school district and our teachers and staff will be safe. The students certainly are what we're here for, but if we don't have teachers and don't have staff to run the schools, what good is it going to be? They'll be virtual anyway. Our teachers need to be healthy. Our teachers need to be protected. Our staff needs to be protected. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. Again, this briefly is what would go on if we find ourselves going back before March the first, which again, we're hoping to do. There, you know, the February break is there, there's been some discussion about turning that February break into a long weekend. Not really what I think we want to do. Everything depends on the numbers. I think the February break is going to be something that we have to fit into the schedule and live with. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. We all know that the vaccines have arrived in New Jersey. I was online today to try to make my appointment, and I think I'm about number three million, right after Frank DeMaio, who's number 2,000, 2,999,000. We're people, I hope it's going to work out for us. Vaccine began arriving in New Jersey last week. The first COVID-19 vaccines were administered to frontline healthcare workers on Tuesday, December 15th. In the first phase of vaccine distribution, healthcare workers, long-term care facility residents, and staff will be the top priority for vaccinations. Educators have been identified for the next round of vaccine currently scheduled to begin in January. I'm so glad that the governor moved the teachers up on the level. They belong up there with the first line of defense. They are our first line of defense. Policemen, firemen, we know are the town's first line of defense. The teachers are our first line of defense. I'm so happy that they moved up. I'm going to take my teaching degree that I have and probably put it to use when the vaccine comes out and tell them I'm a teacher because I want to get vaccinated. Nutley residents will be able to receive part one and part two of the vaccines, from what I understand, at the Kmart in West Arms. When vaccines are available, appointments will be scheduled similarly to the current COVID testing. There are many subgroups to vaccinate and the general population will be vaccinated last with and accept the timeline of April or May. The state is hoping to achieve a 70% vaccination level, SS County Health Officer Mayo Lordo says. While we respect those who do not want to receive the vaccine from a public health perspective, getting inoculated will help tremendously to stop the spread and create herd immunity. And I'm sure we all know what herd immunity is. Next slide, Mr. V. Meister. From Dr. Burks to every American, this is the moment to protect yourself and your family. From Charlie Kozinski and the Nutley Board of Education, Dr. Glazer, our administrators, stay at home as much as possible, wear a mask outside your home, keep the social distance, and avoid, avoid any gatherings. Be safe for your own children, your own family, your grandparents, and our administrators and teachers. We need to keep every one of them in our prayers. Be careful. God bless you. I'm sorry for being so lengthy, but, thank you. I'm sorry for being so lengthy, but I don't go on Facebook very often, but my daughters do, and when they put me on Facebook today, I was, I was sick to my stomach, not from COVID, but from what people have the nerve to put on Facebook. Because we, as board members, can't go back and answer you. So I don't mind answering anybody one-to-one if you have the nerve to sit with me and talk with me or keep your distance and talk with me, but to put it on Facebook is a cowardly way of doing it. And I don't appreciate that. And I don't appreciate my name being put on Facebook as someone that I wanted to, why you shouldn't befriend me? That's uncalled for. I'm a volunteer, we're all volunteers. None of us get paid for this job. It's all volunteer. So when we, when we make a decision, we don't make it in a vacuum. We make it after listening to as many parents, students, mothers, daughters, fathers, anybody we can listen to. You have to be in my house where I listen to my daughter who has grandchildren in Spring Garden and a middle school. And you think it's easy, being a board member? No. Listen to my daughter, my other daughter, who's a microbiologist, molecular biologist, and that's what she's dealing with. She's working on a cure for the vaccine, for the virus. And so I need to listen to her on why we should not go back to school. I'm upset with, and I'm sorry I'm taking that on people, but it's upsetting when board members call me and we talk to each other and we can't go back on Facebook to answer your lies because that's what they are. They're exaggerations, they're lies. Thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll have more discussion, but if you need my phone number, I'll be glad to give it to you. If you have the nerve to want to talk to me one-on-one, I'm easy to find. Now we're going to hear from our board attorney, Mr. Scott Evelyn, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get into the legal part that I wanted to comment on, I'm going to do a little bit of a non-legal portion of it. I just want to commend Mr. Scolera. I don't have the history that you folks all have with him for those many, many years, but I can, one thing I can tell you is, he's made quite an impression on me in my limited time here with the Nutley Board of Education and has given me a lot of pride and satisfaction to be a part of this community. His ethics, compassion, caring, and dedication, and, you know, as other board members and other people have commented on, about, you know, how he is so reasonable and sees issues and understands how to look at both sides of an issue and develop consensus. And the other thing is too, he's just a stand-up guy. He's a real stand-up guy, and, you know, all you guys have told me about his history with the community and dedicating it in all these, you know, various different ways, and I was brought up with the same thing. Yeah, I was brought up with that same ethic in terms of, you know, my grandfather was a board of education, everything else, and I did community service myself. So it resonated with me, and to have somebody give so much of themselves to your wonderful community, I just had to make a comment on that too. In my limited time, Mr. Scolera, you've made an impact on me, and I commend you for everything, and I wish you all the best, you and your family, on your next endeavors. And I, from what I've observed from you, as everybody has said, you're not going to stop giving to Nutley. So this is just one chapter, one, one chapter kind of closing, one door closing, and another one opening for what you're going to be doing for the community. So I had to recognize that before I get into the, you know, the boring legal things that I have to talk about.
Thank you, Scott. You've been great to work with, I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. The reason why I wanted to get on and speak, and actually, Mr., the president wanted me to get on and speak, was to comment on the resolution regarding the addendum to the superintendent's contract. There is a lot of public commentary going on, again, on social media and all over the place on this, and quite frankly, I don't care what side of the issue that you're on with whatever issue it is, I just want you to all have the facts, have the proper facts and the proper law, when it comes to making whatever decision that you want to make. This is your community, these are your decisions, these are board decisions. But I just wanted to make clear that the resolution that's on for tonight is a two-page addendum to an existing contract. An existing contract that's been out there for over three and a half years, that there was public meetings on, that it's been publicly available. This addendum, the only thing this addendum does is modify the existing contract because the law changed. The law changed on the salary caps for superintendents. So it allows for salary increases of 2.5% in the last two years of the existing contract. Now, also in that existing contract, there already was a 2% increase that was in there for the last year. So this only modifies that. There are no changes or anything with regard to merit pay, bonuses, other things that honestly, I've also seen out there that are not true in terms of it. This, the other thing I want to point out to the public, superintendent contracts are the most highly regulated contracts by statute and regulation in New Jersey. There's nothing that can be in a superintendent's contract that's not in the statute. The other thing is too, that I think the president made reference to, contracts have to go to the executive county superintendent for approval prior to even coming back here to the board. And that's the DOE. So the DOE signs off on contract approvals. Now again, this was not a change, this was not anything different than the existing contract. It's a five-year contract, this only changes the salary in the last two years. All those other provisions were in that existing contract. So I just wanted to, you know, I just wanted the public to be clear, there's no mysterious funding things or, you know, income that's not report, you know, things like this or that. These are all, and there's spreadsheets that are provided to the county that analyze the finances of the contract that they sign off and approve on, and it's all under the statute. So I just wanted the public to understand that. Base your decisions on facts and not fiction, and, you know, I'd be happy to answer whenever, if the board president wants me to, but I just want to put that out there for you folks. I know there's going to be a lot of public comments on it, which you have every right to make, but I just want to make sure you're making your public comments based upon truth and facts and what the law is. And I thank you again, I thank you for the opportunity to represent your Board of Ed.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. And as we have mentioned before, it's been a pleasure working with you. Your insight into, into public education or education itself is phenomenal. It's been, it's been a great asset, and we really appreciate the guidance you've given us. And I know it always looks like, you know, you're on our side, but I know many times you've taken us on and said, you can't do this. As Fred and I can relate to, as we would deal with Carmen Recio, who we both love, we know that sometimes, you know, you just can't do the things that you think you want to do. And I appreciate your input, it's been, it's been helpful to all of us. And certainly, we will, I don't think we'll take discussion now, but when we get to that part of the input, if I need to, I will try to answer the questions from the public, but if I need to, I will look for you for resource.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Okay. We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Our board regulation, I'm sorry, our board regulations, 0167, the last 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. And I will make it clear from the beginning, we respect everyone's input, everyone will have a chance to speak if you like to, but I'm going to limit you to that 20-minute time period or three minutes apiece. The first person that would like to speak, you're up.
All right, so a lot of people on the list. Mike Giannone?
Go ahead, Mr. Giannone, is that how it's pronounced?
It's Giannone.
Yeah, so Mike Giannone, I know you, yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Yes, thanks for the opportunity to present. I know everyone's working hard to get the kids back in school. I created a short presentation I'd like to share with you. It is about three minutes long to try to stay within those parameters, and I'll...
And in all, in all due respect, Mr. Giannone, I viewed your video, I don't wish to see that video tonight. Thank you. Next, I don't think it's appropriate for our discussion tonight. We don't allow videos coming from outside. If you have something to say, you have three minutes to say it, we're not going to watch your video.
That's an odd take, but okay, I think the video that I created was perfectly relevant for this discussion. There's serious harm being inflicted on our children through this remote learning process or methodology, and it's not helping that they're home. So I understand that there's obviously concerns about the health of our children, but it's quite clear from all the studies, scientific studies, that COVID is not a risk to children. In regular influenza, it's dramatically more harmful and lethal to children. So the risk isn't there. And then when, I understand the concern that it could be passed to staff members and teachers, but that too has been studied, and schools are not a vector of transmission. It's just not true. All of Europe put their kids to school throughout this second wave because they recognized that the harm of keeping children out of school far exceeds the risk of putting them into school. I don't think millions of parents in Europe recklessly risked the lives of their children by putting them into school. So, and there's plenty, there's schools, there's, Ridgewood, New Jersey only has, what, 10 miles away from here, and they've only missed five days of in-person schooling? Are you going to tell me that the risk, the viral risk in Ridgewood is dramatically less than from 10 miles away? That doesn't make any sense to me. And at the end of the day, what I want to say is that, you know, there is no risk, there is tremendous risk about keeping our children home in remote learning. There's been plenty of stories of children, 14-year-old boy in Baltimore just two weeks ago killed himself because he couldn't take it anymore. Are we going to wait until there's a tragic suicide in Nutley before we change our minds about this? I mean, we got to take that into consideration. I appreciate all your efforts, I know you're all trying to do the best, and nobody wants to make the wrong move. But at some point, we need to step up and say, what's best for our children? And in my view, the evidence, the evidence supports putting children in school. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Giannone. Mr. V. Meister?
Yes, next up is Matt Brown.
Mr. Brown?
Hi, it's actually Mrs. Brown. I'd like to read to you a letter. I want to talk on the school closures, I have a letter that I had meant to send to you, and I'm going to read it right now. Dear Dr. Glazer and Board of Ed members, my name is Olivia Fernandez-Brown. I'm a parent of three Nutley School children and a nurse in the intensive care unit at Clara Mas. I would like to voice concerns with what has been going on in the past 10 months. First of all, I question the legality of our school district charging parents fees to have someone physically facilitate online learning. to have someone physically facilitate online learning. During school hours, it's the school district's responsibility to provide this service free of charge to parents. Our children are not college-aged adults that can virtually learn on their own. An adult needs to be present. The school needs to have staff in the building and allow children in the building if this is what is necessary for their success with learning. I question your claims that you're keeping schools closed because it is safer for Nutley. Keeping schools closed does not guarantee that one will not become infected with COVID. It does not guarantee that families and students will be safer. Some children are learning in unsafe environments where an adult is not present or where victims of child abuse are in constant contact with their abuser. Keeping kids home interferes with pandemic response. Some of us work in healthcare and should be available to respond to the increased needs for nurses and doctors instead of teaching at home. The isolation kids face being home is taking a toll on their mental health and has led to some children committing suicide. Financially, families have taken a hit since these school closures have forced some parents to quit their jobs to supervise online learning. Parents have also incurred a great deal of expenses with the hiring of tutors and babysitters. I question your delayed, continued delays in reopening the schools. The lockdowns and restrictions in place in the spring were initiated to prevent our healthcare system from being overwhelmed. These lockdowns were not put in place so that schools could reopen in a virus-free world.
Mrs. Brown, I'm going to, I'm sorry. I'm trying to stick to three minutes. I appreciate your input. I think we've, we've talked about that quite a bit. We appreciate, we have the same concerns. We have the same concerns and I appreciate your input, but I've got to move on to another person. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ian?
Next up is Chris Clark.
Yes, Chris Clark, 115 George Avenue. I just got to say that I'm appalled that this board is completely tone deaf in proposing to amend the superintendent's contract to increase his salary, even if it is only one half a percent more than what is already part of her contract, which in the midst of a pandemic. Many in this town are hurting financially. We have businesses closed and many of those businesses in town that remain open struggle with, given the restrictions our governor's put in place. We have also had many people laid off, parents that had to quit their jobs so that someone could be home during the day because you as a board chose the CYA route. Meanwhile, other school districts in our area have preferred to do it with rights for the kids in September. Now is not the time to be giving our superintendent's contract an increase in what's in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Ian?
Yes, next up is Amy Kaydaya.
Hi, it's Amy Kayda. K-A-Y-D-A-Y.
Got it. Go ahead.
I'm at 57 Oak Ridge. So I wanted to just again express, as I did last Board of Ed meeting, I have a couple of questions as well, that I believe that, that open schools are essential for healthy communities and the negative impacts of prolonged school closure have been widely documented at this time. I'm a mental health provider and live firsthand the mental health effects of school, prolonged school closure. Our children will be out of school for one year come March. That's one year of no in-person learning or very limited in-person learning only for a couple of grades. I have two questions. One is the COVID testing. Can you please clarify what that would mean and what that would look like? Are we going to do random testing? Are some kids going to be required to get tested, other kids not required to get tested? So that's the question I have.
Okay, we'll, we'll answer that to begin with, okay? And I don't think, let's, let's do one at a time. Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I, I don't think children have been out of school completely for a year. If people, if students choose to go back to school, they have been in school.
Only certain grades.
No, I, I'm, okay. That could be, okay?
Only a very limited hybrid.
Well, it's a hybrid. It's not, it's not limited. It is a hybrid, okay?
No, no, no. I'm sorry, up to this point, only certain grades have been back to school.
Yes, okay.
Hybrid, and it was very short duration.
When, when students, when we open the schools back up to hybrid learning again, whether that's going to be March 1st or sometime after January, depending on the numbers, as I've said numerous times, every teacher, before they come back into the district, will be tested. Every student that is coming back into the district, obviously not the ones that are virtual, but students that are coming back into the school will be tested, whether by the saliva test or by the, the nose swap. Okay?
One time or multiple testing throughout the time of their in-person?
I, I guess, and I'll be honest with you, I guess that will have to be directed by us and by the, the Health Department, which is where we take most of our direction from. But certainly before they come back into the Nutley school system, they will be tested. How often? I, I think we have time to research before then, but I, I will get back to you on how often that we think it would happen.
Thank you. Just one more question, again, back to the question about metrics. What are the specific metrics that we're looking for other than reduced overall numbers? I mean, right now, the governor today said that the rate of transmission is now below one, so that's a good sign. And that was reported today. And so I'm wondering, are we looking for specific measurements here to get these kids back in person? Or are we just talking overall decrease in positive cases? That's where I'm, I'm left confused. So I would appreciate any clarification would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I think the numbers we're looking at are numbers that we receive from the Health Department or the state of New Jersey on a regular basis. And below, below one consistently would be what we in the state and the, and the county would be comfortable with and in the yellow level. So we've got to be at the yellow level and we've got to be below one consistently. And, and I think we're going to get there. I certainly feel comfortable, once the, the vaccine is more prevalent in our area, we'll get there. But I, I'm looking forward to us being consistently below one. Does that help you?
That does help. And then will the testing be provided by the school is the last question that I have? Or are we expected as parents to procure testing for our kids?
No, the testing will be, will be taken, will be secured by the school district.
By the school. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. V. Meister?
Yes, next up is Ethan Eka.
Yes, hello. I'm actually the mother, Joanne. I live on 390 Bloomfield Avenue. So I have a very simple question. Why can't we, like, why can't you let the parents of the community decide? If we're going to take the risk and it's our children that's going to school, why can't we vote as a community and decide if we can go back to hybrid learning? I understand that certain parents are still hesitant and that's perfectly fine. I respect their position on this and they can keep their children for virtual, but there's obviously a good amount of parents that want to send their kids back because those children really need their teachers and they need exposure to other children. And if the masking works and hand washing works, I don't understand why you wouldn't allow children to go back or let us parents at least decide what is good for our children.
And I appreciate that. And I think I tried to say before that all of the board members hear from you and other parents, and I'm going to say pro and con, but we hear from all the parents and, and we are your representatives. We might not be your personal representative, but we are your representatives. And, and I guess it's maybe like, like the seatbelt law. You don't make that decision. You're supposed to have your seatbelt on. That law was made by the state of New Jersey. When we make the ruling to bring our children back to school, it's made by the Nutley Board of Education and we feel confident that the decision we're making is taking into consideration all the parents' input in the town of Nutley.
Well, again, why don't you let us decide that? I mean, last time we were given a vote, right? You said that's an email? And then that email, you had let us decide what we wanted to do with our children. So why didn't you let us do that again? You took a survey, two of them, one in June, one in August. So why can't you get that same survey and boost on that and let us decide as a community what we think is best for our children? You did it before, you can do it again.
I appreciate that and you're not going to like the answer, but we'll take it under consideration.
Well, at least you're considering it. I appreciate it.
And we will, seriously we will.
Please think about it hardly. As you can see, a lot of parents in the discussion are very frustrated and they're dealing with children that are having difficulties with this hybrid learning and a lot of children are developing mental issues because of this. Mental issues are also health issues. I want you to understand that I am a healthcare worker myself. I've dealt with the COVID from the height of it. I've seen people die and I've seen people do fine. I myself haven't contracted it because the mask and the hand washing works. Stop with this, please.
Again, I appreciate your input. We will certainly talk, we will take it under discussion as we always do when we receive input from parents and, and staff and everyone in the town of Nutley. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. V. Meister?
Yes, Laura Del Tufo?
Hi, Laura Del Tufo, 96 Rota Avenue. I wanted to start first by saying, as you know, I'm sort of the mouthpiece for a lot of parents, so that may give me a little bit of a reputation. So I wanted to start first with saying that absolutely we appreciate all of the work that the board has been doing and we know that you care. We, it's, it's not about you not caring for the children and I know that you believe you're making the right decisions, but we are questioning some of the data and some of the sciences behind some of the decisions that you're making. I just wanted to comment on a few things that President Kaczynski just spoke about during the presentation. There was a, a lot of numbers that were provided, but I think what's important when you're talking about stats is that stats can be used in various different ways. So in, in one moment, you're speaking about local, about Nutley, but yet you presented Essex County COVID numbers and Newark has very high numbers, which can elevate the Essex County numbers. So I think when we're looking at the numbers and we should compare apples to apples, if you really want to keep this in-house and at local decision, then we really need to look at the local Nutley numbers. I know you received my letter where I have a lot of data. I have backup and research and sources to everything that I presented in the letter. And there was 0.9% positive COVID cases in Nutley in the last two weeks, right after the Thanksgiving holiday. That's less than 1% of the population. So I think it's important to really look at those numbers so that it's not fear-mongering, so that we're not making decisions based on numbers that are not relevant to Nutley. You also spoke about surrounding towns such as Bloomfield and Belleville, but I would like to talk about those surrounding towns in terms of school. Belleville and Bloomfield are either open or going to open in mid-January. One of our concerns about the, the comment that we can revisit it in mid-January. When you talk about revisiting in mid-January, it comes across as a delay tactic that if we were to revisit in mid-January with a vote, it would take quite some time to then obviously implement the reopening of schools, which mean likely the schools could not reopen until February at the earliest. So already there is a long amount of time that would, that would, our children would remain virtual. I also wanted to talk about the mental health issues. I myself also am a therapist and I think we are, not I think, I believe that we are absolutely ignoring the more prevalent mental health issues that are affecting our children. The increase in depression, anxiety, suicide attempts, it's real, all the data is there, anyone can see it. That tends to be and can be a higher risk to our children than the physical risk to our children of contracting COVID or recovering from COVID. For the woman that just spoke, I agree. You know, President Kaczynski, a lot of your comments appeared emotional, everything kept referencing your grandchildren. And so it seems as though a lot of your decisions is based on your personal opinions and your personal experiences. That should not be the decision of the board. The parents are speaking, a large number of parents want their children back in school and we have the evidence to show that our children can safely be back in school, like the 527 districts that are doing hybrid safely currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Del Tufo. And if it came across that way, I apologize. I'm speaking through my daughter, who's a parent, also like yourself, in the Nutley School District. When I speak for my grandchildren, I speak for every child in Nutley. It shouldn't be taken any other way but that. And I appreciate your input. Your letter was, your letter, your letter was read and, and I appreciate the input. And some of the responses obviously were generated by your letter. And again, I, I appreciate that part of it.
Sure. If I could just say one thing, I, I really hope that when you reference Facebook and Live, I hope it's not referencing my letter. I'm very happy to speak to you about every comment that I made in the letter. I just knew I couldn't discuss it all in three minutes. So that's why I tried to put it in a letter.
And, and I know that and I appreciate you trying to do that. I, I know your concerns and, and we, we all have those concerns. I, it's, I don't know how we can say it, except we have the same concerns you do, except that we're, we're looking at 5,000 people, the staff, the teachers, the students, rather than just my grandchildren. We're not just looking at them, we're looking at the entire community of Nutley. So that's what our vision has been based on. If we can get back sooner, we're looking to come back sooner. And if we do, once, once, once the numbers start going in the right direction, which is down, we already have plans on how to get back to school right away in January or February, whenever it might be, let's say February, whenever it might be, if the numbers go that way. We, we just met as a committee and as a board recently, thanks to Mrs. Ferk, we, we discussed bringing some part-time teachers up to full-time positions so that they can deal with the health, mental stress that our students are going through. So we're, we're thinking outside the box a little bit and things that need to be done if and when we do get back to some type of normalcy.
Sure. And if I can make one, if I can make one final request.
Of course.
When you were talking about the metric of determining whether our children can return in January, mentioning the orange level as well as less than 1%. If we could look at Nutley numbers, again, not Essex County, because it can be inflated by other towns, I think that would be helpful.
You're absolutely right. I know that Newark spurs the numbers and we, we, we don't, we don't take them into consideration in Nutley, but we will certainly keep a close eye on the Nutley numbers. That's what we need to be concerned about. Thank you again. Mr. V. Meister?
Yes, Meg Julian?
Hi, my name is Meg Julian. I'm at 65 St. Mary's Place. And I just wanted to communicate my perspective on this issue. I can appreciate the board's concern about COVID. I do agree that it is a very serious disease and my family takes it very seriously. We haven't seen any of our family member or extended family members. We didn't see anybody for Thanksgiving. We have no plans to leave our house for Christmas and no one is coming over. I have great respect as well for the teachers in Nutley. I've seen firsthand how hard they work and how much they care about all of their students. However, I really need everyone to understand that I want schools open, not because my children are bored or because my children want to socialize with their friends. My children are struggling. I'm watching my first grader failing to learn basic concepts. I am watching my fifth grader have literal panic attacks. He's now in therapy. We have him on medications and these things are not working to help him work through the, the virtual landscape. Meets are an absolute disaster for both of those children. They are able to absorb very little and I am literally watching these meets and teaching them afterwards. I can only do that for one student. So my fifth grader, I'm struggling through his book and trying to learn how to teach him the math concepts that he is supposed to be learning from his teacher. I am not a teacher. I do not have that background. I, like I said, have great respect for our teachers and I think that they have the skills to help them, but this is, there's an impediment with the virtual landscape that doesn't let my children, my children have access to the education that they are entitled to. We, my coworkers in Mawa have, have enjoyed successful hybrid learning throughout this, this year and have had very minimal closure time. And I just don't understand why Nutley is so much more dangerous and why I am having to suffer helplessly in tears, watching my children fail while other people don't seem to be experiencing the same thing. Thank you.
No, and no, thank you. It's really, it's really hard for me to, to communicate back and forth with you about that because I, I can understand where you're coming from. I, I don't want to put Mr. Bany on the spot, but I, I know there's some help for students. I mean, if, if you're looking for some direction, Mrs. Julian, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Bany, might be able to guide you on what could, could help me get through this until we get back to in-school.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, Ms. Julian, did you want to comment?
No, I wanted to be clear that we are not having technical difficulties. We are having problems with the fact that my children are looking at a screen and trying to listen to a teacher, but they're not really able to, to absorb anything. By the time my first grader has processed a question, four- By the time my first grader has processed a question, four other kids have answered the question and they've moved on. The class cannot work at a speed that is appropriate for all of the children at the same time. And the lessons cannot be given simultaneously to all of the children at different learning levels, like they would be in school with small groups. The small group learning is sporadic and only covers tiny bits of things. For my fifth grader, he has ADHD. If his mind wanders for literally one moment, he gets frustrated and is in tears because he has no idea what's going on and he can't look over at his classmates to see what they're doing. His teacher can't see the panic on his face to understand that he has gotten lost for a moment and instead the rest of the meet is awash for him. These are not technical difficulties. These are things inherent to the structure of a meet.
Yes, I wasn't making reference to technical. I know they're educational questions and that's why I had Mr. Banyan come on, if that will try to guide you at all.
Mrs. Julian, I can assure you, our teachers are doing everything they can and we are working closely with them from a curricular standpoint as well as a strategy standpoint, and we continue to work with them. And I don't know if Mrs. Lopensola wants to mention, we are assessing students. We are trying to get a pulse of where they are. We're looking at our tools and we're looking at external tools to do this as well as remediation tools. So the district has started all kinds of conversations about where our students are academically, where they are socially emotionally, and how we are going to meet them where they are and move them forward through this pandemic and following this pandemic, and we're committed to that. I'd be more than happy to speak with you offline if you'd like specific help with your children. And I think everyone in our district would do whatever they could to make this better for your situation.
Yeah, Mr. Banyan, I would just echo the same thing from a curricular standpoint. You know, I think we're trying to utilize that small group instruction and one-on-one time with students also to meet their needs, but I'm going to put my email in the chat and I'd love to, you know, have you reach out to Mr. Banyan and I to talk more specifically about what we can do to support your children.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Ian?
Yes, Taylor Knoll.
Hi, this is Tali Knoll. I'm at 28 Mapes. So I've been on a couple of the Board of Ed meetings and listening. I haven't really spoken before, but I just feel I needed to. And I appreciate all the work you're all doing. But all I've been hearing in the past couple of meetings is the reasons why our kids cannot be in school. I'm a parent of two high schoolers that, and I feel strongly that they need to be in school. Experts continually say so. We hear a lot about the risks of community spread as the basis or one of the main reasons for delaying the reopening and the safety of the towns and the counties. Your mission statement reads, "The Nutley Board of Ed is guided by the mission of the Nutley Public Schools to challenge, inspire, and empower students." There is nothing in the mission or the bylaws about safeguarding the Nutley community or other towns or the county. That's not your responsibility. Your responsibility is our children. The mission of the Board of Ed is to serve the students. There are many examples of other organizations that have continued to operate and fulfill their missions. The community we are discussing here are the students. You are all to be serving. I would just ask the board to be creative and come up with a way to do the right thing for our students, which includes providing options, including in-person learning sooner than March. I very much appreciate the president's statement about the January meeting to consider early return and acknowledge the work that you're all doing. I would just ask that you remember the basis of your mission, which is not the town or the county, but our students. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Mr. Vemeister, we're kind of running past our 20 minutes, so we have many more people in the chat room.
We have two initial questions. One person wants to speak again.
Okay, we'll take the next person, Mr. Vemeister.
Donna Ferraro.
Okay, just on mute. Hi, Donna Ferraro, 34 Roosevelt Street, Nutley. I would like to speak to the board members about the decision of the contract for the superintendent. As I speak, I would like you to think about what I am saying. I want you to ask yourselves, do you speak to the frontline workers, the teachers? Before giving this raise to the superintendent, do the teachers have all the necessary items and training that they need? I spoke to a few teachers and this is what I have been told. In regards to the PPE and opening the school safely, first, there was no mask given to any teacher unless they asked for it. In my district, we were given a packet of cloth masks and a mask holder for around my neck. There is only the hand sanitizer outside of each classroom in the dispensers. No Plexiglas, no Lysol, no wipes, no gloves. You cannot open up school safely without this kind of material. In my district, I have two desks in my room by each door with a hand sanitizer, box of rubber gloves, box of tissues, hand sanitizer, spray, a water bottle that sprays water, and liquid soap and wipes. On my desk, I have been given hand sanitizer, spray sanitizer, and two cans of Lysol. Our custodians are constantly cleaning bathrooms, wiping door handles, et cetera, to keep the schools clean and open. I think money should be used to hire more custodians, even if it's on a part-time basis, to help with cleaning so that the students can go to school and schools can then open up safely. In the area of technology, the Schoolology Program bought by the district, it is a cheaper version of Google Classroom, from what I've been told. The students and our teachers have been kicked off due to the lack of the program's ability. The teachers were then told they cannot use Google Classroom. From what I understand, it makes it easier for the administration to see what's going on. With Google Classroom, the administration would have to schedule themselves to go into each classroom. Schoolology Program is administration-friendly. It's not easily navigated by the teachers or for the students. The teachers were never asked what they needed for home to help them teach virtually. They were told first come, first served for a document camera. No teacher can teach without a document camera, especially from home. Each teacher should have had an access to one camera, meaning that the district needed to purchase them. Money that should have been used.
Ms. Ferraro, I'm going to, excuse me, I'm going to have to cut you off. Your three minutes is up unless you're almost finished.
I'm almost finished.
I'll give you that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. They also wanted the teachers to have training during the summer months, but many teachers were not available, nor by contract, they don't need to be. But they should have planned on this training and to be able to pay the teachers summer hours. Again, money that should have been used. So I'm hoping, I will cut it short a little bit, but I'm hoping that with the district, and I know it's not an easy task for any superintendent, for any teaching personnel, any supervisor in any of the districts, but right now at this time, I think the money should be better spent and a raise held off just until next year and use the money towards the part-time employees and the PPE that the teachers do need and document cameras. Thank you.
No, thank you again. I appreciate your input. Mr. Vemeister.
Yes, Denise Ballou.
Yes, hi, Denise Ballou, 136 Center Street in Nutley. Thank you, Donna Ferraro, for everything you just said because it echoes everything I was about to say. Many of us in town right now have lost jobs, have spent time trying to navigate our children through virtual learning. And it's kind of a slap in the face, especially right before Christmas, to see a raise happening and a bonus on top of that. And I understand that it was a part of a contract, I do. I just wanted to echo something that I've heard from a lot of parents and a lot of people that when all of us are possibly collecting unemployment or maybe not even collecting unemployment, that's a big slap in the face. If it was laid down before, it's kind of very much the same, a slap in the face as the new football field. I understand the monies were there before. I am just trying to let the board know that this is how parents are feeling. So Donna Ferraro, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballou. And just for clarif, are you done? I'm sorry, are you done?
I am, go ahead.
Okay, just for clarification, this is an add-on to a five-year contract that's been in existence and there is no bonus. Again, the make-believe, there's no bonus out there, okay? There's merit raises if the superintendent decides to put in for them, but there is no bonus and I appreciate your input. Mr. Vemeister.
Yes, Laura Del Tufo would like to speak again.
Without a doubt. You don't have to apologize. Go ahead and speak.
Thank you. I admittedly do not know a lot about politics and I have just a request from a desperate parent. Is it possible to amend the resolution tonight that's being voted on that rather than a start for the first week in March for a start, a return to school the first week in February? Is that possible?
Mrs. Del Tufo, I tried to make it as clear as I could. The March 1st date is a floating date. No, we're not going to change the resolution tonight. That's a date that is out there strictly to make parents that we've been hearing from throughout the district that are looking for some type of a go-to date. If the date changes to where we find ourselves comfortable with the numbers in January and we want to move to a February start, we can do that. We can do it immediately. We have a special meeting which takes a 48-hour notice. We have our meeting and school goes to a sooner date within a couple, within a week, within a couple of days if has to be. So the resolution stays as it is tonight, but with the option that we put right from the beginning that we will revisit this on a weekly, weekly basis that I'm sure if I miss something, I'm sure you will bring it to my attention on how the numbers look in Nutley. And I sincerely appreciate that. I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic. I know that you will be on top of it, but the resolution stays the way it is tonight.
I understand.
Thank you. I'm sorry, are we done, Mr. Vemeister?
Denise Ballou would speak again.
Okay, Mrs. Ballou, we'll take you one more time, all right?
Thank you so much, Denise Ballou, 136 Center Street. I just had a quick question. You referred several times throughout the meeting tonight, Mr. Kozinski, about Facebook posts and things that are true and not true. I just want to ask, what is the proper protocol for Facebook? Because my husband two days ago received a Facebook request, friend request from you. So I don't know if you're just like throwing those things out there or...
No, no, you know, Mrs. Well, it probably should not even have been part of the discussion tonight, Mrs. Ballou. I'm not a Facebook person. I do have a Facebook page, but my daughters tell me when things come on concerning the schools and as school board members, I think we just...
Well, no.
Let me just finish, okay? So when stuff comes up on Facebook and they're not truths, we get a little frustrated as board members because we would like to go back on Facebook and say what really is the truth, but that's not the place for it. That's not, the place is here. The place is to pick up the phone, call the superintendent, call me, call our business administrator, call your friends that are board members and you'll get the facts. When some of the stuff comes up on Facebook, it's not always true. I just encourage people to call the superintendent, myself, board members, our BA, and you'll get the truth. It might not be the answer you're looking for, as Mrs. Del Tufo has found out numerous times because she's been in conversation with our superintendent, but we will give you the facts. That's all we're looking to try to bring to the public.
I appreciate that answer. Thank you so much, but you did not answer my question. My question, what is the correct protocol for a member of the board or president of the board to reach out to Nutley community members unsolicited, as my husband was two days ago, by you?
Yes.
On Facebook. So I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Okay. If your husband, I happen to re-friend your husband on Facebook, which I normally don't do, but it was a downtime and I found myself busy doing that. But if your husband or any citizen is looking to contact the school board members, our emails are pretty much all the same. Mine is c@kazinski@nutleyschools.org, f@scalera@nutleyschools.org. They're all the same. I would encourage you to email us, reach out for us, and that's the right way to get your voice heard. And it's a lot easier that way. That's all I would say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your answer via email then. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Vemeister, we're done, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, board members. Mrs. Dancheck, and again, I appreciate everyone putting your microphone on mute if you're not talking. Mrs. Lisa Dancheck, will you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take academic resolutions 1 through 6 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. DePisa.
Mrs. Dan, Mr. Carnasella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
No on one, yes on the balance.
Mrs. Scalera.
Yes.
Ms. Zaro.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Mr. Carnasella, will you take administration, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to do administration as written, 1 through 4 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Carnasella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Scalera. Ms. Zaro.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Mr. Ferraro, will you take finance resolutions, please?
I move finance resolutions 1 through 10 as written.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. DePisa, please.
Mr. Carnasella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes, on all, abstaining on number five.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes, to all, abstaining to number five.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Scalera.
Yes.
Ms. Zaro.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Mr. Scalera, will you take personnel resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personnel resolutions 1 through 10 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Carnasella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes, on number one, abstaining on number two.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes, to number one, abstaining to number two.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes, to number one, no to number two.
Mr. Riley.
Yes, to number one, abstaining to number two.
Mr. Scalera.
Yes.
Ms. Zaro.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes. Ms. Zaro, will you take policy resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move policy 1 through 3 as written. Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Ms. Zaro. I want to, I'll have a discussion. I appreciate the hard work that your team put in on the policies. Unfortunately, I had to sit in for quite a bit of that. It was a long night for you and your team and I appreciate the hard work you did. Roll call, Mr. DePisa. Roll call, Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Carnasella.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin.
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Riley.
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera.
Yes.
Ms. Zaro.
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski.
Yes. At this time, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for these communications. Also, again, each person should be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson. No one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Anyone have anything concerning questions at this time?
Mr. Kaczynski, Mrs. Christentello, good evening with the Education Association of Nutley.
Yes, Mrs. Christentello, certainly, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Kaczynski, Dr. Glazer, and members of the Board of Education. I'd like to thank the trustees of the Board of Education for making the health and safety of the students and staff, staff, a priority during this pandemic. On behalf of the members of the Education Association of Nutley, I'd like to wish all of you a new year filled with health and happiness. Thank you.
And the same to you and your staff, Mrs. Christentello. Anyone else wish to be heard at this time? Any old business, I'm sorry.
Nadia Charder, what do you say?
Hi, good evening, Nadia Charder, 493 Center Street. I actually already heard the answers to a couple of the questions that were asked. So I think I am okay for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Mr. Viamy, sir? Thank you. Any old business, I'm sorry. Any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Before we adjourn, I want to thank the board members for your diligence, your hard work, the citizens for your input tonight. Appreciate everything. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. Be safe, keep your distance, keep your mask on, and I'll see you in January. Thank you tonight.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Stay safe and healthy, everyone.
You as well.
Happy holiday.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.